Mr. Miles coming today?
Yeah, he was here earlier. He'll be here.
The board, the school board meeting of the Wilmer Public Schools. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be having a special board meeting on July 8th to approve the sales of bonds at 4:30, and we will have our regular scheduled meeting on July 13th at 4:30. I have no public comments related to the agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
As amended? No, that was the first. Was as amended, approved?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, the consent agenda passes. Okay, now on to reports. Business and finance, Pam Harrington.
I'm going to defer until I collect the budget for next year.
Okay. Human resources, Liz Fisher.
A couple things to update on. First of all, you probably aware that we did a building culture assessment earlier this year, and June 1st, we had the feedback session for our certified staff in the buildings. And then this fall during workshop, we will do the non-certified staff. And we will also have them come in and kind of present an overall district overview for you, but just to give you kind of a general outline, when we get the feedback back, we kind of get everything into satisfaction and engagement of scale. And so, the amount of our district staff as a total, so certified, non-certified together, that are at the highest point of that, we're at 56% of our staff are in that top box, and we have just under 2% in the lowest box. So let's just have an overall viewpoint. Each building, of course, has differences, and then whether it's certified or non-certified, like, so we'll have more of an update from the company later on, but certified staff did work on building goals, and then the non-certified staff will be working on their security in workshop.
Liz, do we know when they're coming to meet with us?
We don't, yes.
Okay.
Because we're debating whether it should be after the non-certified staff meet their goals, so that maybe there's some feedback.
And is this employee morale, or what?
Yes.
This isn't the cultural awareness study. Is this something we say?
This is building culture, meaning morals, absolutely correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, within the buildings.
So, it's organization culture?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. As far as hiring goes, we're getting there. We're almost there. Non-certified staff, we just have a few hires left, mostly in EL and special ed, so we kind of hope we anticipate doing those with, but everyone's kind of struggling in those areas. A negotiations update for you. We have, like I said before, four groups that are running. We've negotiated twice with our teachers. The next meeting, it was June 30th with the teachers. And at that point, the district will be presenting their issues, along with responding to all of the issues that were presented by the teacher group. We've negotiated with all the ASME groups, so secretaries, custodians, and services. And I think we have a kind of agreement with the food service staff. They're hoping to vote, of course, schools out before anyone thinks that happens, so they'll be running another opportunity, which might not be at the workshop, unfortunately. But we have a TA with them. We are working on with the secretaries. We're down to one issue, and we're just figuring out kind of language, so we should have that one done soon also. And custodians, we have maybe two topics left, but feel really good about where we're at, so maybe one more. So, just on to a quick update. And then, of course, summer projects. Now, that school's out, we're trying to update some things, like handbook, just some systems things, like the Appletrack, which is the hiring system, and then considering some new things, such as like teacher evaluation tracking, so we know kind of where we're at as we go, make sure everyone's getting ready and taking up.
Thank you, Liz. Superintendent, Dr. Kiergard.
I'd like to thank the board for the reception that was held this afternoon. I truly do appreciate it. Thank you. Seven years went very fast. This is my 467th working day after 26 years. It'll be more than any person should have to sit through. But it's, when I added them up, I had to check it twice to make sure I was even close, but that's a pretty close top and end head. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve you and the Wilmer District, the Wilmer community, and best wishes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to action item G1, approve the 2015-16, 2016-17, and the 2017-18 superintendent contract. Liz Fisher.
Well, it's pretty, it's a standard contract. I believe it's in the board signature packet, so it's what we had talked about at the kind of the last meeting when we did the offer, so we want to obviously seek approval.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent contract for Dr. Holmes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Dr. Holmes' contract has been approved. Action item G2, approve the teacher tenure status. Liz Fisher.
All right, so this just continues along with what we've been doing with the teacher tenure. Again, this is just a practice that our district has done. It does nothing statutory. We can't actually give a teacher tenure. They earn it through completion of statutory requirements, which is basically service in the district, certain number of days, that kind of thing. So this is just in support of that statutory requirement, and we would recommend approval of this teacher tenure.
Do I have a motion to approve the teacher tenure status?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the teacher tenure status has been approved. Approve 2015-16 budget, Pam Harrington.
Thank you. I threatened the board that I was going to go through this binder page by page, who told me they would promptly approve the budget, so. All right, going to go over the 15-16 original budget. Couple of things that really impacted this budget. First of all, the education bill was vetoed by the governor, so we have no education bill. They, some of the legislators and the governor reached an agreement, and so we know a few things that they say they're going to pass once there's a special session, but there's been no special session yet. So what we have is assumptions, and we're hoping that it doesn't change before they go to a special session. Contract negotiations, as Ms. Fisher reported, are underway. We did $1 million of budget reductions related to this budget. The thing that I want everyone to really walk away from here understanding is that the district will continue to make reductions each year, as long as expenditures exceed revenues, and the fund balance hovers close to 6%. So really, if you get nothing else, please get that. What happens is, the legislature gives us money, and everyone says, "Well, you got money. Why are you still cutting?" Because we are spending more than the money they gave us. It'd be like if you were overspending every month, $50 more than what you were bringing in, and you got a $10 raise. That would be fantastic, but you would still be overspending by $40. So I just want people to understand that they can expect to be hearing about budget cuts and seeing budget cuts. Also, we know that the avian flu has hit Candy Ojai County. That could have an impact on our enrollment. If that does have an impact on our enrollment, that's where fund balance comes into play, because we know that we cannot, we can only make staffing adjustments in the spring for the following year. So if something happens to our enrollment, and we lose a bunch of students, there are very few staffing adjustments that we can make to be responsive to that. So our revenue would further go down, and that's what that fund balance is for. That's a perfect example of what fund balance is for. Currently, we have not seen enrollment go down, but we don't know how that's going to play out over the summer months and what's going to happen. So we are expecting enrollment to actually go up by 13 students. We have pretty flat enrollment right now, which you can see on the graph. Everyone knows in 2013, we jumped for some reason, and it went right back down. So if you exclude that and look, we've got fairly stable enrollment right now. So you'll see ups and downs every year. And for general fund revenues, we will be bringing in about $47.7 million. It's an $8,000 difference from the revised budget, but if you look by category, you can see we have some significant changes. So on local revenue, we're expecting to generate some additional local revenue. We will be implementing one-to-one iPads for at least 7th and 8th graders in the middle school, and so there will be a fee, similar to what the high school has. So that will generate a little bit more money. Also, the aid levy shift. Some of our formulas for levy, part is paid by aid, part is paid by levy, there was a little bit of a shift, a little bit more is paid by levy. So that would increase our local revenue. In state aid, we have the enrollment increase of 13 ATM. Right now, the negotiated legislative agreement shows an increase of the basic funding formula of 2%. So that's what we put in here. Originally, I had 0.5%, but it's been announced publicly, they're looking at 2% on the funding formula, hopefully that will stick. That's offset in part by, there's discontinuance to the special education cross-subsidiage, so that goes down a little bit. We do have a whole new special ed formula for FY16. It's supposed to fairly break us even, but not from expenditures, but I mean, it's supposed to be similar to the revenues we've received in the past. But that one cross-subsidy piece is going away. And then for federal revenue, the school improvement grant ends fiscal year 15, so next year, no more school improvement grant. And at the time of this budget, the rural and low-income grant and the immigrant grants have not been awarded. We typically get those, but we don't find that out till the fall, so it's not in this budget, because it's not guaranteed. And then we did have a slight increase in the 21st Century Grant. So that's revenue, 47.7 million. And then when we go to expenditures, you can see they're at 49.8. Again, to that point that I was making earlier, 49.8 is bigger than 47.7. So we are deficit spending. We're going into fund balance even now. But you can see here, our expenditures are down about a million. So salaries and wages, we have contract settlement assumption of about a 2% increase, along with some offsetting budget reductions. So that goes down just a little bit there. Employee benefits, the health insurance rates went down, so you can see that reflected. Also, what you're going to see in numerous spots throughout this budget is one-time expenditures that happened in fiscal year 15, which would be this year, that we're not expecting to see next year. So some of that, we had some unemployment costs when the West Central Integration Collaborative was dissolved, and so those were in 15. And then also, we had some one-time payments to eliminate paid-up life policies. And so that is another reason why those employee benefits are going down. Purchased services are going down. In 15, we had things like the superintendent search, we had a community survey, and we have election costs. Our anticipated health and safety costs are expected to be lower in FY16. And then, there's a little bit of a switch. iPad leases have previously been recorded in purchase services, and now they're moving down to the capital expenditure category, so that's just a little flip. Supplies and materials, we have budget reductions to supplies. It included reductions to the supply budgets, as well as the curriculum budget. And more of our curriculum purchases, based on who is up in the cycle, will be coming through as capital expenditures under technology and as equipment. So you would see capital expenditures going up then, based on what I've just told you about curriculum purchases and technology. Also, those iPad leases moving over to the capital expenditures. So for unassigned fund balance, and that's the part of fund balance that we make our decisions on for budget reductions. The board policy has a minimum of 6%, because we want to keep ourselves out of statutory operating debt, and so that's about 2.9 million. Our fiscal year 14 audit, we came in at 7.7 million, which is 16%. Our revised budget, we're expecting to be hovering just under 11%. And then our original budget takes us down to 8.48%. So you can see what our fund balance has been doing since 2010. It's kind of going up, going up, and then it started to drop. So the thing that I want everybody to remember is, district will continue to make reductions each year, as long as our expenditures exceed our revenues. So that's a general fund. All right, we're going to move on to food service. Food service, not too much is going on. Local revenue is expected to go down a little bit. For our shared services agreements, McCray School District is not going to be part of that anymore. They're going out on their own, and so you can see that little bit of loss of revenue. Federal revenue increases. We've been adding programs, and we have a program called the Child and Adult Food Program. That's some of our after-school feeding, and then we're also doing a summer feeding program. And Annette reported on that too last month. And so then, we have an assumption of a 2% increase for contract settlements. Supplies and materials will increase, based on all these new meal programs that are happening, so you see that increase, because that's where food sits, is in that supplies and materials category. So you really see that go up. Capital expenditures, right now, we have them projected to go down. It's really based on projects that are being done in food service and the timing of those projects. So I know right now, we've got, we're looking at for next year, possibly middle school cooler, freezer, but we have to get that in with the, all the bond projects that are happening as a result of the election, and so we're looking at the timing of that. So we don't think the whole project will happen. If that changes, you'll see that switch in the revised budget. So that's what's going on in food service. Community aid, there was a reduction of a fast-track grant for adult basic aid, so that took revenue down just a little bit. But in almost all of our state aid categories, our revenue is increasing. So adult basic aid, early childhood family aid, and school readiness aids, all show an increase right now. We won't know where we're truly going to end up until the special session happens. And then federal revenues went down a little bit, and that has to do with where the community engagement specialist is being quoted now, because the federal revenues follow the federal So then, again, the 2% increase contract settlement assumption is in here, and then throughout the rest of the categories, you see basically a decrease, and we had a few things in fiscal year 15. Again, expenditures that we don't expect to see repeated in '16. We have the driver's ed vehicle that was purchased, and that happens about every three or four years. There were some online programs and some certain supplies that occurred in FY15 that we don't expect to see in FY16. Then the new big thing we have going on is the building construction with the bond sale, and you're going to hear from others on that in probably just a few minutes. And so what we'll see there is, we'll see the money come in, and then we'll see the expenditures for the projects. So we'll be carrying a fund balance in that account over the next three years as these projects happen. So debt service for the first, for this year, there'll be no revenues or expenditures till the bond payments occur in FY17. We still have our little, the district holds a tiny scholarship fund, and then our proprietary fund with delta, delta. So one last time, don't forget.
Say it with you, or?
Don't forget. Did I say I have to say it like eight times? And I only chose three, so I'm just hoping that that works. 17 times? Oh, boy, nope, just three. So this, the budget is out on the web, and so if anyone has any questions, they can contact me, email, phone calls, stop in. I love to talk finance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2015-16 budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. And that we approved of the 2015-16 budget. Thank you very much, Pam. Now, moving on to action item G4, approve resolution providing for the sale of the general obligation school building bonds. And we have Eilers with us.
Yes. I'm Jody Sesvall with Eilers, and I was here before the election. Congratulations on the successful results. Very exciting time. I know it's a very busy time, and now I have Jerry bailing out on you, but Pam thinks it's all going to be just fine.
I'm going to need some.
So I provided you with a pre-sale report, and I'll just walk through that. It gives a little bit more of an overview related to the bond sale process, and then you have a resolution before you tonight related to the bond sale. So if you turn to the first page, I'll just make a few comments about some of the items on each of these pages. You'll see that the issue amount that we're estimating right now is different from the maximum amount that the voters authorized in your election. And we'll talk through some of the reasons for that in just a minute, but you did get approval from your voters to issue a maximum of $52,345,000. Right now, we're assuming that that issue amount is going to come in at about $50,030,000 and still give you the money that you need for your projects. So that's, that's the goal. And again, you'll be using this to take care of the projects that your voters approved in the election, and the statutory authority is Chapter 475 of Minnesota statutes, and you'll be repaying the debt service payments then from debt service levies on an annual basis. When we issue bonds, you'll see there's a term and call feature there. There's a call feature that's set, and that's the point in time when you're able to refinance or refund the bonds. So this is a standard call date, so the bonds would be eligible for refinancing with a call date of February 1st, 2025, and then the maturities from 2026, and thereafter would be able to be prepaid at that point in time. And we generally do exercise those call options, and the investors know that, and the underwriters know that, and so they kind of figure that into their pricing when they give us their bid on the day of sale. The state credit enhancement program, oh, it's a bank qualification, provides financial institutions and banks with a tax advantage if you're issuing less than $10 million in a calendar year, which you will not be. So we're just letting you know that those aren't subject to bank qualification features. The state credit enhancement program is a program that's free of charge to you, and the state guarantees the payment on your debt. So this is definitely something that you want to participate in. It gives the investors additional insurance, that they're going to get the money that's due to them, and gives you generally more bids and a lower interest rate. So the resolution that you have before you tonight does include that language, and Pam's already signed off on the application that we submit to the Department of Education. So that is underway. Moving to page two then. Because you made the last payment on your existing bonds this last winter, you don't have any debt outstanding, so technically, you don't have a bond rating outstanding anymore. But on this size issue, of course, you're going to want to have both an underlying rating, and you will participate in what's called the state credit enhancement rating. And previously, you worked with Moody's on your bond rating, and I know that Pam has made some connections with them. And we did get quotes from both Standard and Poor's and Moody's, and they were the exact same price, so we've decided that we'll move forward with Moody's on that rating. And we're going to get that scheduled and put together an agenda, and I know that Pam and Jerry are both planning to participate in that conference call, so that will be happening over the next couple of weeks. Then, the next section describes our basis for the recommendation on the general obligation school building bonds. That's what you told your voters. This really is the best tool for you to finance these projects, and so we are moving forward with that type of financing. We will solicit competitive bids, so we'll get bids on the morning of July 8th, and thank you for being willing to have a special meeting. We had another school district that passed a $25 million bond issue on May 12th, so just a week before you. So they scheduled theirs for July 13th. That's their regular board meeting date, and we just think it'd be more advantageous to you to not be in the market at the same day that they're issuing a big bond issue. So you're going ahead of them. So we're hoping that's good. And then, here's where we get into describing the premium pricing structure. So almost all of our bids recently have been coming in with sizable premiums, where the underwriter is giving us bids at an amount that exceeds the power amount of the bonds. So the way that we've structured this is to make sure that, in the end, the cash that you have on hand for your projects is what the architects told us, told us that you would need back when we put together the schedules for your submission to the Department of Education, your review and comment submission in January. So I'll show you on our schedules how we make sure that we still get to that dollar amount. Once we get the bids, everybody will kind of give us a little different pricing structure on the day of sale, so I would be surprised if the, if the amount of the bond issue equals exactly this amount. But again, our goal is just to make sure that we hit that target of the bond proceeds, net bond proceeds, so that you have the money you need to finance your projects. You don't have any existing debt. It's all paid off, so that's the last item on page two. On page three then, because you're issuing tax-exempt debt, there's advantages to the school district doing that, so along with that advantage comes many rules and regulations. So the first one that we're talking about there is continuing disclosure. We have handled that reporting for you for your previous bond issues that were outstanding, and we'll continue to do that then on this issue. Same with arbitrage monitoring. They don't want you earning a lot of extra money and issuing bonds and, and making money on your proceeds, so that, so there's some regulations in place for that, and I know Pam is going to work with the, whoever you determine you're going to invest the bond proceeds with, should be able to provide you with the arbitrage monitoring information, and make sure if you owe anything, that you need to rebate to the IRS, that you do so. And then, the last section there is the other service providers that we'll be using. Your bond attorney has already been involved, and will continue to be involved throughout this process. It's Tom Deans from Knuts and Flynn and Deans. You're required to have a paying agent, because you're participating in the state credit enhancement program, and that's listed as Bond Trust Services Corporation, which is a subsidiary of Eilers. And then Moody's Investor Services, who we're planning to work with for the rating. So next then, on page four, you'll see some of the steps from here on out, tonight being the pre-sale review. We'll get the official statement ready, and hopefully have that distributed June 22nd. And shortly after we have that distributed, then we'll have the conference call with the rating agency. They'll grill you with lots of questions. I want to learn all about the great things happening in Wilmer. And then, we'll take bids, as I mentioned, on the morning of July 8th, and we will present those results to you at the special meeting at 4:30 on July 8th then. And we plan to close on the bonds in early August. So the attached schedules then provide you with all of the numbers related to the bond issue. And again, these are our estimates, assuming that this bid came in from an underwriter with the premium at this amount. So you can see at the top there, the power amount of the bonds that we're planning on under this scenario is just a little over $50 million, with the re-offering premium of almost 2.1 million. There are some funds on hand in your debt service fund right now that we're planning to use toward the project, the exact same amount that was included in your review and comment back in January. And then, we have a pretty conservative estimate in there for investment earnings. Hopefully, you'll earn more than that while your bond proceeds are outstanding, but just to have something in there as an estimate at this point in time. And then, the underwriters discount is kind of like points on a mortgage, so again, we kind of net that out against the premium and determining how much we're going to issue on bonds. And cost of issuance include our fee, your bond attorney fee, rating agency fee, paying agent, and county certificates, which we need to get some of the information for the official statement. And then, that next number, the largest number in the uses of funds, is that magic number that I was talking about. $51,604 is the exact number that the architects gave us for the projects that you plan to accomplish with your bond issue. And again, the debt service funds, and then a rounding amount, because you have to issue bonds in increments of 5,000, so there's always a little rounding amount involved. So you can do something exciting with that $3,806.70, should this all play out exactly as shown here. Then, on the next page, we have an estimated payment schedule and an estimated levy schedule on page seven. And then, we've given you the same schedule that we included in the review and comment document for your estimated levy and resulting tax rate. Interest rates lately have been a little volatile, to say the least. Early last week, things were looking pretty good, and then they kind of spiked up. So I do have a couple of charts and graphs, if you're interested at all, but this is index of municipal bond rates in the last year, and you'll see this nice dip right here. This nice low amount was in January, when we, when we prepared the review and comment. And we definitely had some buffer built in, but you can see that things have started to climb, and you know, kind of gone down a couple, at a couple points in time, and now on the rise a little bit, again, at the end of last week. So we're hoping things settle back down. This is the nice visual chart of the tenure, the same index, and you can see, you know, we're still well below the average for the tenure period. We're still in a good time in terms of interest rates being relatively low, but they have started to spike a little bit again. And, you know, we'll just kind of see how things end up. We'll get the best bid that we can on the day of sale, and bring you back the results and show you what the actual is looking like. So we're hopeful things calm down a little bit. That's the plan. Hopefully, nothing crazy goes on in the world that makes things spike back up. So that's what we have in terms of the information related to the bond sale, and then you have the short resolution before you to move ahead with the bond sale and the bond sale process.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution providing for the sale of the general obligation school building bonds?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And that's a roll call. And that's a roll call vote.
Lyndon Tyson?
Aye.
Mike Carlson?
Aye.
Liz Vanderbilt?
Aye.
Laura Warren?
Aye.
Jackie Salisbury?
Aye.
Mike Reynolds?
Aye.
And Jared and Aziz absent, a pass of six, zero.
Now, moving on to action item G5, approved resolution establishing procedures for reimbursement of bond issues.
So, this is a standard resolution that most districts who pass school building bond issues will consider because, as you can see from the timeline that we just went through, you will be getting your bond proceeds at time of closing, which is August 4th. You'll probably be incurring some costs, you maybe have incurred some costs already, and you'll need to make some payments prior to the time when you get those proceeds. This resolution allows you to reimburse yourself, then, for those proceeds, and the IRS requires that you have this in place in order to do that. You can, if you look at provision 4C, if you have preliminary expenditures, according to the IRS definition, you don't need to have that official declaration of intent form that your bond attorney will give you, but if you have anything outside of that, you do need to complete that form. Just, you don't have to send it into the IRS or anything. You just keep it for your records, but this protects you so that you don't have a problem later on if you're reimbursing yourself for expenditures. Kind of a standard resolution that the districts who pass school building bond resolutions put in place just so that you're protected on that.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the resolution establishing procedures for reimbursement of bond issues?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And again, roll call vote.
Mike Carlson?
Aye.
Liz Vanderbilt?
Aye.
Laura Warren?
Aye.
Jackie Salisbury?
Aye.
Mike Reynolds?
Aye.
Mathiasson?
Aye.
And Jared and Aziz absent, six, zero.
And now, moving on to discussion item H1, first reading of the post-insurance compliance policy.
You probably didn't realize you were going to get involved in so many fun things with this bond issue, did you? It was just get it passed, and now you get all of the fine print details. So, the IRS has picked, stepped up its enforcement efforts with respect to tax exempt debt because they know that they are not capturing all of the revenue that they could if they were issuing taxable debt. So, when you, you're probably familiar with lots of different IRS forms. The IRS form that needs to be completed with respect to tax exempt financing, however, is called an 8038G, and you'll see that in all your closing documents. They've added two questions to that form, asking if the, if you have written policy and procedures in place. And so, we think that the reason that they're putting that on there is that if you check "no," then they're probably going to subject you to some additional scrutiny. So, if you have the policy and procedures in place, then, and you can check that box with the affirmative "yes," you're probably going to get handed off to a different stack than the people that are checking it "no." So, we, most of the districts now that we work with have passed this policy and procedures. It's kind of a standard template. It does require a lot of extra responsibilities, and on behalf of Pam, she noticed that, of course, as soon as we sent it to her, but we think it's really important to have in place and to know what's expected of you as a tax exempt issuer, and to have the IRS know that you're aware of what's expected also. So, that's the reason for this. I think this is your first reading tonight, so technically, we'll probably put a different date on the documents when they actually pass, or do you put the first?
We'll have our second reading on July 8th of the special meeting.
And does that fit our time? Okay.
Yes, because we will need to complete that 8038G form for your closing, which is August 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the 8th.
Yes, we're excited.
Okay, moving on to H2, first reading of new policy 427, workload limits for certain special education teachers.
This is an MSBA, M.A.S.A. board policy, and my rec, it's the first reading. Read it over if you have any questions. Contact me, but it's the first reading of this policy, and it comes from MSBA.
Thank you. The 2015-16 school calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry about the special ed. When I had a question, I was moving a little fast. It was a recommendation. I wanted to understand, that's the reason why we're studying this? I'm sorry.
It's a recommendation from MSBA that we have this policy.
Okay, so it wasn't internally driven?
No.
It's kind of law, actually.
Everything's law.
Very rarely do we have.
It's established that we have that rule of policy in place.
Okay. I was just trying to understand the background of it, so thank you. That's what I needed. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
2015-16 school calendar, Dr. Kierg.
Well, we have a problem. They haven't approved the education budget, and within that is the okay, the approval to start school on the 1st of September or the 2nd. The problem is, is that we have to hire people to do staff development, and we have people who plan trips that week. So, the suggestion was that you approve starting on the 8th of September, which is the day after Labor Day, that we just go ahead and do that, rather than wait for the state to pass the budget, and that way, everybody's able to do what they want to do relative to airplane tickets and vacations, and we can get staff development folks here and know what day it's going to be. So, that's, you've already approved it. I should, we're just going to use that calendar, unless you have a major problem with it.
I think September 8th is the time.
I mean, I'd have preferred to start the 22nd of August, but you can't do that.
We may go through a government shutdown. I mean, we really don't know what the future holds, so September 8th, and also looking at our budget and what we need, I think it's.
I would agree. I just want to let you know that. This way, it's out in front of everybody, and everybody will know it.
Thank you. Discussion item H4, special education program review, Bruce Miles.
He's coming in.
We have a really bad chair for you.
Any introductory commentary?
Bruce has spent some time studying special ed for the last, probably the last six weeks. And this came about because there is a concern on my part that we needed to take a look at special ed and see what it is that we can do to make adjustments and changes to it to make it better. We had made some significant changes a year ago, and it seemed to be that there was a fairly large backlash against those changes, and I wanted Bruce to come in and just take a look at it and help us get some clarity on what it is that we need to do. He's done that. He has a report. You should have gotten it as part of your packet, and he's here.
Thanks. Board, ask questions if, as we go along, if you have any questions, if things need clarification. The purpose is up there, and I want to make it clear that on the front end, this is really programmatic. It's not financial or a legal audit, but it's really a question of how do you get to the next level of sophistication in your special ed programs? You can see under process that we did interviews with administrators at all the buildings, special ed staff from all the buildings and alternative sites. We had some regular ed teachers also. There were two online surveys that you've got on page two. We'll get to those. I made some general observations in the bottom of page one and the top of page two. And it's clear that your current assistant special ed director has worked pretty hard, but, you know, as the outsider listening to people tell the story, I think you've taken on too many initiatives in a timeframe that's too short. There are some pretty big changes you've tried to push through, probably all needed, but I think your people are suffering some initiative fatigue. Third bullet down on page one, the very bottom there, people are mourning loss of the coordinator model. They really believed in the model. The model was taken away, and I think that frustration has bled over into other special ed initiatives. Top of page two, couple more bullets, just general observations. The initiatives have not been designed through a lot of collaboration, not only collaboration with building-level administration or other district administrators, but all the way down to special ed staff. There's also been some confusion in the past about when special ed staff are asked if their opinions are advisory to the process or binding, and I think that confusion has caused a lot of conflict. The heart of page two there lists some general observations about the surveys. We had 74 employees and administrators answer those four questions. You had 23 parents answer the four questions at the bottom. The underlined items under each number indicate the two biggest trends that showed up most often within the survey. When people identified teamwork, almost exclusively, they meant teamwork at the building level. When they said the seat model works, they said that we like the concept here. In the interviews, there were a lot of problems brought up with the seat model, but people in the survey said, you know, "We understand that the model is, and we think it'll work." They would like to see, under question two, more communication and more general support for special ed teaching staff. Question three was asking if we were to try to improve seat, what would we do? People said we need to have clearer timelines. They don't want any backlogs of cases, and improved communication regarding information in as well as information back out of the system. Fourth question, what would be of use to you in terms of professional development? SPED forms is the new software that you've purchased, and people also said we'd like to learn more about special ed laws. Questions or comments, board, at this point?
I have kind of, or a comment for you is, I was looking for a definition of what the seat model is. I know what we as a board reviewed and was presented to us is this is what we are going to do, but I was looking for that common understanding of this is what seat model means, to know what we're measuring, you know, what, because the general observation surveys kind of conflict with one another, and so I was like, where is that true definition of what this looks like or flowchart? And I haven't seen it since we approved it as a district.
The gifted and talented kids are a little ahead of the teachers. We're going to get to that toward the end of this thing.
Thank you.
Your parent results were really interesting, and I mentioned to administration today, under question one, we had, again, we had 23 parents, and I couldn't break confidentiality on the survey, but a number of special ed staff were called out by name as being assets. I mean, people say, "Oh, Mrs. Olson, Mr. Smith," that, the people clearly said, the parents said, "Without a doubt, the number one thing that's going well is my, whoever's my contact in this district." They also believe they're getting good communication from their primary contact person. In terms of improvement, the parents said they would like to see more of a push toward an inclusion-type model, and they wanted communication back regarding other districts' offerings and other options, if you will. So, again, they list a communication because they're getting it from, what they need from their case manager, but they'd like more communication about special ed in general.
I have another question.
Jump in.
Sorry. When you look at, when you say inclusion, is that inclusion as parent being involved in the process, or is that their child is included in mainstream core programming? Which way is it going?
The latter, about student inclusion.
It's student inclusion, not parent involvement. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Number three, how satisfied are you with communication to and from the district? You had a 3.2 on a scale of one to five, and please remember, there's only 23 folks here. It's kind of a low end, but these are the people that went online, so they deserve to be acknowledged. What's really cool in question four is people said, "Look, we'd give you guys almost a four out of five on special ed," and I think we all know that not all special education services are error-free, and not every consumer's always happy. So, that, that's a really big number. Congratulations. Question, top of page three. There are five areas, and they're bold here, you see, in program goals, relationships, communication, refinement. I made some general observations about what people said under each one, what I heard from all the buildings and all the programs, and then, in the second half of the document, I'll give you some recommendations you can consider. Under number one, program goals, leadership and ownership and project management, a lot of confusion overall with special ed goals, roles, responsibilities, you know, all the way from the cooperative to the district, building level, regarding decision-making. Widespread confusion around the purpose, roles, and responsibilities within SST and seat. So, these are what people told us during the interviews. Number two, relationships aren't as strong as they, as they could be between district-level special ed leadership, building-level administrators, and building-level special ed staff. This, this lack of a relationship, I think, has probably made some of the conflict a little greater than it needs to be and increased some of the misunderstanding. There's a small statement there that says relationships must be specifically developed and followed through on-person, in-person meetings. Communication, you know, people were pretty unclear about where to go for help. I think, if I'm a special ed, and I have been a special ed teacher, if you're a special ed teacher, you go to wherever you think you're going to get an answer, and sometimes that could be a peer, sometimes that could be a building-level administrator, it could have been my advisor or coordinator for the building. So, there's a lot of people getting information from lots of places, and a lot, many of the people in the interviews indicated they didn't exactly know who to go ask for what. So, I don't know if they were, it was explained and they didn't hear it, or they're not sure how to do it, or under the pressure and the situation, they just grabbed the first person. But there's a lot of infidelity in this part of the communication, decision-making, and Number four, special ed staff and regular ed staff in specific really didn't understand the whole array of services piece, and they weren't sure where to start and where to exit, where the transitions happen, who's responsible for it. So, you know, I don't know who explained all that in the past, but right now, there seems to be a lot of misinformation and a lot of dissatisfaction with how that's going. I'll run through this top of page four and then see if the board has any questions. I also made a note regarding specifically regarding HR, personnel, and finance issues. The dissatisfaction with the removal of the coordinator position has really involved in some damaging behaviors. You know, there's, there's a possible sabotage, some sabotage of some special ed initiatives, you know, by some staff. I think some staff have, some staff pulled me aside after and emailed me after and said, "You know, I've been told not to do it this way, do it the old way." So, you know, I don't think that's widespread, but this dissatisfaction with the removal of the coordinator position has really thrown a big rock in the pond. There's a lot of ripples going out from that. Another issue is that Mars reporting timeliness and accuracy may also be suffering from your elimination of your coordinator positions. I've got some recommendations in there later about how to tidy that up, but, you know, we want our Mars reports going inaccurately so we can claim the money to do the district.
That also affects our MCA's, does it not?
Conceivable. I'd be, I'd be more concerned about the money part of it, frankly.
I understand.
I think that.
But when we have a focus and priority school, it's important to have accurate information. Funding's very important, but there's also another part in here that it does affect, I believe.
So, any questions or comments about general observations? Sounds like we're ready to roll. Recommendations under issue areas. Under the program goals, leadership, ownership, special, the assistant special ed director and your district level and building-level people really need to develop a short and succinct special ed plan that says, "Here's what we want to get done, and here's what we'll take on for the next year." And I, I would really indicate that it's got to be just one or two things, rather than four or five big initiatives. I also put down there that special ed staff ought to be involved in the design and delivery of it. I really believe that if you ask teachers to come in and put their fingerprints on initiatives, they'll help color in the blanks. What I said to the administrations is, you've got to take a crayon and draw an outline of what you want, and then go back to special ed staff and building-level leaderships, say, "How do we color this thing in?" So that everybody gets their fingerprints on it, you know, so if people get a chance to actually start to build version 2.0. The numbered items under 1A there, that there ought to be a way to measure whether or not you're getting what you want to do, very specific communication strategy and methods so that people really get a chance to understand it all the way downstream, that you benchmark it, so we know what we're looking for at 30, 60, and 90 days, and then get feedback from the users at 30, 60, 90 days, and make adjustments where necessary. 1B, group needs to spend, your, your special ed director and your district level and building-level administrators need to spend a little more time on an org chart. One teacher had a pretty interesting comment. She said, "If I just had..." She said, if I just had a three-by-five index card that was laminated, so I knew where to go for people, that would be helpful. But since the coordinator system's out, I'm not sure exactly where to go with this. So, again, if you notice under 1B, I suggest that special ed staff get involved with design and delivery. Then again, you check for understanding in each building and program, and that you enhance communication by using that feedback. So find out what's working, not working, and go at it. 1C, the advisor model, you know, the coordinator slash advisor model, that's again, a real hot potato. Again, suggested that your special ed staff get involved with it, in the design and delivery of version 2.0 of this thing. That advisors meet regularly with building administrators, and the assistant special ed director should be in that meeting. Advisors should hold weekly meetings, less frequently after that, but it's easier to have fidelity to the initiatives you're putting forward. If there are more meetings on the front end, I realize people are busy. But short meetings to work on what we're doing and measuring our 30, 60, 90 day outcomes should help you quite a bit. I'd recommend the special ed, the assistant special ed directors at each of those meetings, in each of those buildings for the first 60 days. Under number five, I used to be an advisor, if you will, consultant for school districts in special ed. And it's a different job than teaching, and it's a different job than administration. It's a job that's high on influence. You have to try to get people to do what you want them to do without any real power. And I really believe that that group has got a difficult job. And I would recommend there's a curriculum literally put in place for their professional development, because that's a hard job. Again, identify the issues at 30, 60, 90, check for understanding, and use the 30, 60, 90 day feedback to revise and improve. Those last three, you're going to see pasted in here regularly. But I think what's happened is you've tried to put a lot of initiatives in place without a lot of way to benchmark and measure how effectively they've gone on. And so as a result of not having data, there's not been a chance for any mid-course corrections. I'll stop after E here, but let me run down to 1D and 1E. If during planning, your assistant special ed director and building level admin can develop program goals and roll them out to the buildings, then I think the same metaphor applies. We'd be able to say, here's the goal that we want to get done, now how are you going to color it in at this building? How are we going to color it in this building? Because there may be some subtle differences in each building, but it would be nice to see just a couple of goals come down from the leadership team, developed by leadership teams, special ed and building administrators, and then figure out how to color it in. You'll notice again that special ed staff have been suggested in part of the design delivery in each of these. And then a weekly meeting with the superintendent and the special ed director under 1E. Board comments or questions at this point?
Well, go ahead, Linda.
No, you go. I'll wait.
No, I guess, just a couple of questions just coming up right now is, so, first of all, why did we move away from the coordinator model?
I'm hoping somebody from Wilmer can explain that.
And that's why I wanted some of the perspective jury of what our district did. And again, the seat model, the reason why it's called the seat model is because it's a model. It's used in several districts throughout the whole state, so it's not like we created our own. And so some of this stuff gets a little, you know, so what did, Mike's question is, what did we do as a district to research the seat model? And who did we bring at that initial table or two, or maybe it was 20, to roll it out?
The discussion was brought to us by our special ed director from the co-op and Lisa Adi, our assistant special ed director. They brought that discussion to us as an administrative cabinet.
And that was because our special ed scores were too low?
What's that?
Is that because of our special ed scores were too low?
Yeah.
Was that the moment?
They felt that it was the appropriate move to make at that time. And then, after 18 months, it maybe wasn't. I don't know. I still don't know. But it was, it was a recommendation to us to move to the seat model, the special education assistant team model. And it was, we talked about it administratively, and there was quite a bit of discussion. And some of the, some of the things that came about created a lot of consternation on a lot of people's part. Doing away with coordinators created a lot of consternation. But you've got to remember that there were two buildings that still kept their coordinators. The senior high and the middle schools still had a coordinator, the elementary buildings didn't. And they had the, they had the seat team in place at those levels. So it, I think that was part of the problem, too. We had two separate, different models over in place. So it was just, it was something that was suggested we give it a shot, and we did. Never been afraid to take a risk. I just don't know, looking back on it, maybe we shouldn't have.
Bruce, I have a question for you. Because at the very beginning, you say that for the most part, the staff was supportive of the seat model.
In the survey, they said, we like the concept, we think this has got merit.
So what I'm, what I'm seeing here is that it's not so much the issue with the seat model, it's more the issue that there is, there was no strategic planning put in place on how to unveil and implement all the changes. It was more like, here you go.
Do it.
Do it.
I think our thought was, though, that we had, there was communication that was going on. And I think that one of the things that Bruce discovered is that either there was a lot of communication and they didn't hear it, or there wasn't as much communication going on as we thought.
Right. And where, what's going to go with this is that, what I'm reading and hearing is that the staff believes in the seat model, but we need to start over from square one and redetermine how we're going to collaborate and communicate and refine that model. I don't hear and hear that they want to throw the seat model out.
You know, you're on the right track. What I don't think you had was a way to measure how it was going with valid feedback.
Right. And there was no valid feedback because there was perceived lack of communication. And that perception could be because the assistant special ed, you know, you've got the two top chiefs running off in different directions, trying to scramble and get what they need to get done on a day-to-day basis without including the Indians and working together as one group.
There's also the concept of idea flow in organizations. It says, in great organizations, ideas flow.
Right. Because you need to, you need to have communication this way and this way.
Right. And I think what happened is this was such a big one, it was, here's how it's going to work, and then there just wasn't the ability to check on a regular basis and see where it was hitting and missing.
But I believe we received grievances right away when this was released. So some of those feelings and animosity toward this new system has been there for some time. And unfortunately, we were not able to find a productive, positive way to hear what people wanted and needed. And so now, 365 days later, however many days later, it's festered to become this.
But Linda, you're right. But that's, it is what it is. And so now we need to develop a plan to remedy the situation, which includes developing a better protocol for communication. And this is going to be something that's going to involve, I would say, a lot of Liz's time, because it has to come from the very top down.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And Bruce has basically outlined what the recommendations are. Now it's up to us as the board and Liz and the staff to start, here are the recommendations, let's start our checklist.
I agree. And I was just curious about the principals. I don't know about you, Lori, if you've done the seat model in past classes.
It wasn't in more than...
It wasn't, but you were familiar or you were not? Okay. Because I believe Mr. Goglin, we have changing of principal leadership here during this whole time as well. But I believe he was very familiar with the seat model, too. So the fact that the building principals didn't know, that kind of caused me a little question and pause, too, is to know about their involvement in this. But I agree with you, Laura, that the seat model is in place, it's how do we make it better?
Right.
And what, what are we going to do? And I'm excited because Dr. Holm, our new superintendent, coming on on July 1st, you know, I think, I wanted to hear what that process is for him to be involved. He has been the special education director. He's been in charge of Title IV and other programs for his much larger district than we are. And so I think that gives us another great opportunity.
I also think we as a board are, we don't need to, we're not going to make this decision today, but we need to make a decision if we're going to keep Bruce or some sort of outside consultant onboard to make sure that this process continues to move forward and becomes a better program.
He has the history. I mean, with Dr. Kiergard, which highly...
But there's always, there's always a lot more urgency to make improvements and to put recommendations in place and have accountability when you have an outside person that you need to watch.
That'll be a great discussion for you and your new soup to have. Lisa and Liz and I talked, I presented this to admin today, and we talked about how they can actually kickstart some of these steps. You know, and Liz was starting to badger, I mean, professionally suggest that.
Right.
They need an early July. So, I mean, I don't think anybody wants this to get set down, but I really believe you've got a lot of, a lot of talent in here that can actually get this thing up.
So that's kind of where I want, I go, as we look back in time. And I think, as I read through this, and correct me if, you know, as I'm paraphrasing through this from your, from your observation, is, I see what we have, is we have two different entities trying to accomplish either the same goal or different goals, or they're trying to do it differently. I think as we brought the cooperative in, because someone said, well, the cooperative director worked with our employee. And I guess my point is, would this have been, it just seems to me like we've abdicated a lot of authority and power to the cooperative. We've basically given up the, how we're going to run and implement the seat team, and we relied on someone else to come in and do it for us. We eliminated coordinators, brought in advisors, and there's, there's a lot of other things that I see are going on here, which I can, I can kind of see what's just causing some of this, this rub, because I question what, I look at the district employees as having skin in the game. This is their baby. This is, they've been here, they've been through it. Now all of a sudden, we have another entity coming in saying, no, this is how we're going to do it. Yeah, we like the seat model, but you know what? But this is how we are going to have you implement it. And I see that constant rub. So I guess if we can unravel it, as Laura was saying, is this something that we can, we used to do this all by ourselves. We had a special education department that worked really well. And is there any reason that would prevent us from taking over our own special ed department again, implementing the seat model, where when we sit at a table, they're all Wilmer Public School District employees? And communication flows much better, because now we have, we have our director, she's at, you know, she's getting pulled in about 47 different directions. And that can't be comfortable. You know, I think, I just, I've really struggled with this a lot in my mind. And I just think there, we got off on the wrong track here, I think with a good, a good idea, but we let somebody else do it for us, where we gave it up. And I think we need to bring it back.
Mike, so, so I work with, I've worked with every one of the service cooperatives in the state but one. And I happen to think that Southwest, West Central gets more done than all the others. So I think they're a good operation. I suspect they're a good value for you guys. As a consultant, though, the worst case scenario is somebody comes in and goes, hey, just kind of do this for us, or what do you think we ought to do? And it's almost like the wrong question. So when we get out into the next page, I want to walk through, because I think what's got to happen is, as the administrative and leadership team at the building and district levels, here's what we want it to look like, then it's, here's what we want from the cooperative. Not the cooperative resigning your plan, but you guys saying, here's what fits for Wilmer. And by the way, on this part of the initiative, we need you to do this, and we need advice on this, we need handholding, whatever.
And we've used, we used to use the cooperative for that, you know, for counsel. I mean, hey, are we on the right track? But it was our initiative. It was our staff's ideas that we moved forward, and then we use them for a check and balance and say, are we, are we on the right track? And I think this is where this has all started to break down.
And I think a lot of, a lot of staff at the building level and, and many of the administrators aren't really sure about what's the role of the service cooperative, what's the role of Lisa, what's the role of, but again, I think if you guys can develop the plan here with special ed staff input, say, here's where we ought to want to go, then it's going to be even easier to say, here's exactly what we need from you on this part and on this part and this part of the cooperative.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Bruce, what I'm reading here is, by bringing the staff in and getting the staff's engagement early with what you're talking with Liz, we now are able to do what Mike is suggesting. Our district, our special ed program is able to say, here's what we need, here's what, and now we're going back to that model instead of, you know, I heard you, I heard the staff in this, and people in this survey say, we can't bite off more than we can chew. And I'm not sure we can really bite off, completely doing away with the service cooperative right now, but we need to redefine, going back to this original model, how we utilize the service cooperative. So your suggestion of using the staff this way, is that how you envision it then, is that we would have those meetings now during the summer so that we can turn around and come back and say, here's what we need?
Again, I think I want your district level and building level leaders to identify, and we'll get to this later, kind of, you know, what are our beliefs and what's our vision? What are our one or two goals to roll out for the next year? And then staff, how do we start to make that happen?
But you want staff there as well with building level leaders? You know, that's what I was hearing. That was one of the things I didn't see happening previously, that we did not have the ones that are on the ground at the table helping with some of the planning and implementation.
Yeah, I think, I think your leaders have to identify what we're going to do. Staff have to be involved with figuring out how to make it happen.
Can they utilize their PLCs for this time? Because they meet throughout the year. And I'm not sure if special education PLCs are meeting as just special ed teachers, or are they grade level? And Mike, I see nods and no's. And I'm like, ah, is that building specific? I'm sorry. So you could be in third grade meeting with your third grade PLCs, and you could be...
One day, so one day, a week, they would go to the grade level PLC, and the other day, they would be special specific.
And that's our current practice this past year that we just concluded. Okay.
I'm going to head to Roman numeral two on top of page...
Yeah, we got to stay.
Roman numeral two on top of page six, developing and improving relationships. The N 2A, this ought to be done this summer. Assistant special ed director, district and building level people identify shared beliefs and a new vision, role and relationship, special ed director, Southwest. You know, as a consultant, when somebody comes to me and draws the black outline and says, can you show us how to color this in or color this in? It's a lot easier contract than, you know, what do you think we ought to do here? So I think that's what you're going to get under 2A. 2B, I want to make sure that people understand that your assistant special ed director really is your primary source for addressing and improving communication specialist district. As you develop that org chart and identify what questions your advisors and coordinator ask, then you can get that in there, too. 2C, that you've got the shared vision and belief, and make sure that we deliver those results and allow input at the building level. And then I would suggest under 2D, that you repeat that process in January so that they get ahead of it and start to build the two goals that you're going to deliver for fiscal year '17. Again, you kind of kickstart that planning again right there. Number three, you know, there's been a lot of communication out, but I'm not sure there's been a lot of communication received about the way you want it done. So special attention should be paid to the role of special ed staff and the design and delivery of communication strategies. And that's just not saying, what do you like or what don't you like? But how do we actually develop better systems and put them in place and then test them? 3B, assistant special ed director post and be accountable for weekly offices for special education advisors. The general ed staff weren't really sure if they could or how they could use the brains and experience of the special ed advisors. And I think that's an asset that you want to spread out across the building as much as possible. 3C touches on chain of command again, but it really needs to take on special ed issues, Mars and HR issues. Again, special attention to be paid to the role of district special ed staff, and there should be appropriate checks for understanding and reliability of your new communication and complaint systems at 30, 60, and 90 days. Board, any questions at this point?
Do we have, do we have, from your, from your view, and as you walk through and talk to people, I mean, do we have enough people in places to be doing the job efficiently? Or are we, do we have too many? Or are we, do we have too many, are we too short? I mean, we take a look at, at the seat model, we take a look at, you know, one advisor for each building. I mean, do we have enough bodies, boots on the ground that are delivering services to our children?
Mike, it's a really good question. I don't know how to answer it. I, I don't know how to answer it at the teacher-to-kid level, right? That was not part of this, and I'm not, I'm not sure what to say about that. Regarding the advisors, you know, as administration talked around the table, administration and DO, there was, there was some agreement that advisors and coordinate, and the current coordinator kinda look alike, but then there was kind of a, yeah, but they're a little different. So I, I would phrase the question, can you measure it over the first 90 days of the year next year and then make a decision about personnel? Because I don't really feel like I can say, you're heavy, you're light. I, I know that you're not getting what you want yet, but I don't know if it's number of personnel, I don't know if it's design of system.
And, and we're not, we're not even solving, but I think, to me, it just seems an easy fix would be to make the coordinator and advisor the same role. I mean, you know what I mean? Why, why are they different? I guess that's a, you know, because they say, well, there's, there's, they're kind of, I, I know, I, I've heard exactly what you said.
Yeah.
Well, they're kinda the same, but, well, not really. So I, you know, so I, I think we're on the right track here, Bruce, but that was a question that just came, I mean, do we even have enough people doing these tasks?
Are you talking about the advisor?
Or on with the special ed staff.
Yeah, I mean, specialized staff, seat team, seat team members. I mean, do we have a mod, do we have it where they, do we have the right people where they need to be?
Well, I don't know if.
And the right amount of people?
I don't know. I think we have the right amount of people, or we're close to it. I don't necessarily, I, I can't really judge if we have the right people, okay?
And I don't mean the right people as in personnel. I mean, do we have the, the right people in the positions doing the right thing? That's kinda where I'm, you know, and do we have the right?
I think we're close.
You know? That's kinda what I wanna know.
Bruce, so like, it's hard to know because we're not running it efficiently and effectively. If we were having better communication and we were all going towards the same goals because we all bought in, that may change the number of people you need or don't need. So I mean, then you would be able to fairly evaluate whether or not you were staffed appropriately.
If we had some formative data, you know, along the way, I think you'd have been able to make some, some better adjustments, and you'd be closer to answer that. I hope by Christmas of next year, after you kinda roll out special ed 2.0, by the time they start to make their goals for the next year, you're gonna be able, you won't be there, but you'll be a lot closer to answering that question.
Thank you.
Page seven, refinement of the array of services. Number one, just basically about communicating it out. Many of the general ed staff said, you know, we, we really aren't sure where things start and stop, and who to refer to, and when it goes. And, you know, and they don't need to be special ed staff, but they need to be conversant about the system enough to be good advocates for kids. And there was a lot of confusion, too, within special ed staff about how these things all relate. Continued training in 4B there, specifically for general education with special education staff in RTI, including tiered instruction, level three interventions. Training for special ed staff on how fast and other assessments will be used to monitor progress. And then finally, the recommendation is that special ed staff gets some release time to actually crank through IEPs and actually have a little bit of work time. Comments or questions so far? Number five, I'm suggesting that selection, supervision, and evaluation of all special ed personnel be made by building administrators. There's, there's maybe some confusion about who has the final say as a principal, about who ought to be in their building. And I'm gonna tell you that in 99.9% of all the districts on earth, the principal's the last choice, and so I'm gonna suggest that happen there. Under 5B, there was a lot of conversation about use of paraprofessionals, assignment of paraprofessionals, supervision of paraprofessionals. And a lot of special ed staff said, we're too busy to do it. We, we assign, we build paraprofessional schedules, and we're not sure if it's working out, we're not sure if it's working for the para, we're not sure if it's working for the regular ed staff. We're not, we're just not sure. We're stretched a little thin in terms of supervision. You're, you're making a pretty sizable investment in, in paraprofessionals, so you need some more process to improve selection, supervision, and evaluation of special ed paras. You gotta really refine and make sure that the paras understand who's providing their direct supervision and evaluation. And 5D comes back to the chain of command specific to handling financial and Mars processes. Board comments or questions? Concerns? Complaints?
So you spoke about having a conversation with Liz and Lisa about getting the group together. When are we thinking about that taking place? So when does our 30, 60, 90, our first 30, 60, 90 begin?
Good question. To be determined. The discussion around the table today was, obviously, everybody wants to get out at sooner rather than later, but somebody at the table should be the new superintendent.
Right.
So that does push the timeline out a little bit. And, and we're talking to, you create the box.
Right.
And then the next step would be to color in. So to create the box, you know, discussion was later in July. Of course, for the most part, that's the only time that this is gonna get off. So we're asking them to give up some of that time and come in and let's get started. So we're gonna shoot for after the 15th and try to set at least one, if not two, dates to get principals in. And then as soon as we have that, we're gonna set the dates for staff and start doing communication for staff and admin and help. But we want this done before middle of August at the latest, because that gives us little turnaround time.
And is it, is it fair for us, and Bruce is the board, to say that we, we need to have the 30-day update, 60-day update, 90-day update, as we go along this whole thing?
That would be a board role.
So that we can, we can be the, the advocates for you, we can be the assistants for you, we can...
And part of the process will be setting what, what is our 30-day, what are we going to reach in 30 days? And how are we gonna measure that in 60 days and 90 days? So it's not just, how are we feeling at 30 days? Here's the data.
So not, not to push you, but to, but to push you. At our July, at our July board meeting, then, we should be able to have a clear date of when our first three days are gonna start ticking off.
We should have dates.
While the dates are.
Yeah. I like that, Mike. I was thinking the exact same thing. This is such an important, this is such an important initiative that we've gotta get, we've gotta get going on. And a lot of times, we receive reports, I mean, Bruce put a lot of work in, a lot of staff members here put a lot of time in working with him. But so many times, we get these reports, and really, nothing ever happens. I mean, from the standpoint of, we're updated, but then there's not an action plan, you know, afterwards. So, I mean, we have to create the action plan. And I think it is important that every, at every board meeting, which is once a month, that we have our official board meeting. I do think that we need to have a few minutes of a progress check of what we're doing here, and then, you know, where we're going and where, and then timelines of when that task is gonna get done. Because this, there's a lot of good information here. I think we, we gleaned, we gleaned, I think, it validated a lot of noise. I mean...
Mike, people are unbelievably clear about where the improvements need to come.
And, and that's, you know, this validated all the stuff, it brought it all and put it into place. So good job on that, but now, we gotta, we gotta make this and do some work with this now.
And remember, on, on any initiative, a board has three roles, right? Kickstart it, ask for data, and don't get dissuaded if somebody grabs you at the grocery store and says it's not working. That may cause you to ask another question, but the real question is, what is the data showing?
How about having a board involved? I know when we had our school improvement grants, we did have, I was that board member that, that with the team for the SIG, and saw I was able to understand what was happening in here in the buildings, what was going on with that process. Is this a situation where if we wanna have regular meetings, updates through minutes and things, if we had a board member present, would that be helpful?
I, I think that we need to allow our staff to do their job and report back to us versus having a board engaged at that level. I really think that they know what they're doing. We need to let them do it, give them this, give them the tools that they need, and they're, they can do it, and they will report back to us. And that, I think, is...
I think sometimes, too often, too, it gets, when we, we get ourselves out there, we, we add another level of a student communication. And that's one thing we're hearing very clear here, is that communication is somewhat of a breakdown.
Yep.
So I think it might be beneficial for this group to come directly to this body and not assume that one of us is able to come back and report. Because we're gonna miss it, no matter how well we take the notes, we're gonna miss something. It'd be better for them to come back directly to us, I think.
And then we can all ask questions that may arise versus having one person ask the question.
I wanna just echo what Mike said. I think what you've put together here, Bruce, is a great outline for us. I think the best thing this does is, gives us now, this is day one, what happened prior to here is, is there. Going back is not gonna do us any good right now. Let's start here and begin the process of evaluation of where we're gonna go moving forward. Reevaluating where we went wrong is just gonna bog us down. Now it's time to do what we maybe should've done, or not maybe, what we probably, we definitely should've done last year, and that is, get everybody onboard and start moving in the right direction.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Bruce.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bruce.
Any other questions for Bruce?
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
I had no public comments related to non-agenda items. In your board packet, there is a board committee reports for early childhood. We'd like to acknowledge a donation of $250 from Rock and Crystal Arcilla to the Jefferson Learning Center. And Dr. Kiergad, we'd also like to acknowledge that this is your last board meeting, and we thank you very much for all that you have done for our district.
Are you gonna create a list that we can publish it during?
Well, I don't, I don't know. It's one of those things you just do. I, I guess I'd just like to comment, I was one who supported the seat moving. I still support that, but I'm also the person who brought him in. Because I was discouraged and, to a certain extent, distraught at what I was hearing about from special ed. So both sides of the same coin, I got, I flipped and dealt with, okay? I hope at the end of the day, that special ed is a better program. And I think that the plans that were shared with you tonight will help you do that. And I, I think that's what, all we ever wanted. That's all you want, that's all I wanted. And so it's, Bruce did a nice job for you. And you, now, now you get to have the challenge, a new challenge. Thank you. Thank you for seven years. It's been, we have done a lot together, we've made a lot of, I'm gonna be watching, driving around, watching all the construction going on. It's gonna be a really exciting time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So do.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.